Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Special Planning Commission meeting of November 18th, 2019. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution. One motion. And the question is...
Will the Secretary please call the role? Commissioner Bus?
President.
Commissioner Cohen, absent. Commissioner Lanson?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Chair McMahon?
Here.
Let's see, are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
Chair, I would like to point out that we have a supplemental packet this evening that contains a condition related to Item 7A in the agenda, as well as correspondence that was received in relation to the same item.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under Public Comments must complete a speaker card and file it with the Recording Secretary before the Public Comments portion of the agenda is called. The speakers' remarks should be addressed to the Commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member. Unless otherwise provided by the Commission, speakers are limited to five minutes. The monitor in front of you will show you the remaining time you have. Are there any public comments at this time? I have not been handed any, so I'm going to assume we do not have any. Next, do we have the consent calendar with the minutes? Next, we have the consent calendar with the minutes, November 4th, 2019. Do any of my fellow Commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Bus?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve those minutes.
Commissioner?
Just an administrative question for Commissioner Lanson and myself. Since we were absent at the previous meeting, I presume we should be abstaining from this vote, is that correct?
That would be correct, but since we do have a quorum, the two that were here could vote on it and make the majority.
Very good, thank you.
Councilmember Newman and Lanson abstaining. Okay, item number seven. Will the Clerk please open the public hearing?
Item 7A. Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider. Agenda item 7A, Appeal of DPMN 2017-70219. Appellant is requesting the Planning Commission reverse the administrative decision approving DPMN 2017-70219, thereby denying the request to install a wireless communications facility located at 1634 Newberry Road. The appellant is Trevor G. Marshall and the applicant is Verizon Wireless.
Thank you. Presenting on behalf of staff is Associate Planner Will Chua.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, for your consideration tonight is an appeal of a decision by an administrative hearing officer requesting to reverse the decision made in approving DPMN 2017-70219, thereby denying installation of a wireless communications facility at 1634 Newberry Road. This project was processed as an administrative review in accordance with Resolution 97-197, which is the city's guidelines and standards for installation of wireless communications facilities. The resolution allows the processing of wireless communications facilities on commercial and industrial zones with the approval of a minor modification to an active special use permit or development permit through a minor modification to such permits. During the review period, staff receives opposition letters. When opposition letters are received, staff is required to conduct an administrative hearing, which was conducted on August 15th of this year. The decision on that planning... On that administrative hearing was approval for the project, which was subsequently appealed by the applicant. The Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Section 9-4.2807, allows any aggrieved party to appeal an administrative decision to the Planning Commission within 10 calendar days of the decision. And this is the reason why this project is before the Commission tonight. As a matter of background, in May of 1988, the self-storage facility was approved by the Planning Commission. In May 31st of 2017, Verizon filed the subject minor modification, DPMN 2017-70219. Between that and July 27th, 2017, staff has worked with Verizon on different project designs to make it acceptable with the city's guidelines and ordinance... I mean, guidelines and standards, excuse me. On July 27th, 2017, notifications were mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the project in accordance with the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code notification requirements. Staff received 25 opposition letters. And, as I said earlier, an administrative hearing was conducted. During the administrative hearing, the administrative hearing officer found that the project is consistent with Resolution 97-197. It complies with federal guidelines on RF standards. And the project was found to be exempt as a Class 1 exemption under California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. On August 26th, 2019, staff received an appeal. The project is located to the south of the 101 freeway with Newberry Road in between and some commercial establishments. Giant Oak Avenue is to the west. Motel 6 Hotel is to the east. The post office is to the front or to the north side, and as well as the In-N-Out Burger. The project is... The project site is a little bit higher than the elevation compared to the properties to the north. And to the south of the proposed project is a residential area. This shows the site plan for the project. The north or the top of the screen is Newberry Road, Giant Oak to the left side of the screen. And the project is located right where the mouse pointer is showing, on the east side of the project, within the self-storage facility. The antennas would be contained inside a tower feature, an extension of the tower feature on one of the buildings. This is a picture taken from the east... From the west side looking east. This picture shows the tower feature that would be increased where my... The pointer's hovering. That extended feature will be 10 feet high and will be compatible with the existing structure. It will contain nine panel antennas that will not be visible from members of the public. This slide shows the existing and the proposed north and south elevations. As you can see, the north elevation is on the top of the picture, and the tower extension would be on top of the existing tower, which is proportional in dimension compared to the existing tower feature. This next slide shows the existing west and proposed... I'm sorry, the existing and the proposed elevations for the west and east elevations. This project is evaluated in accordance with the city's standards for wireless communications facilities. Section 4A of the resolution allows processing and approval of a wireless facility through a minor modification to an existing or an active development permit or special use permit within a commercial or industrial zone. In this case, is the project site is zoned C2. Section 5 of the resolution pertains to standards in evaluating wireless facilities. Staff evaluated the project against the applicable sections, which is 5B, I, J, K, and L. Section 5B requires that the project avoid altering the scenic view shed. The 101 freeway is a scenic view shed. The facility is located 600 feet from the scenic corridor to minimize its visibility from the 101 freeway view shed. The tower is designed to be architecturally compatible with the existing building. Section 5I prohibits artificial lighting, and there's no lighting proposed to illuminate the facility. 5J pertains to advertising signs. There are no advertising signs that will identify the presence of the facility. 5K requires accessory structures to be unobstusive and meet setbacks. The equipment enclosure for this facility is located next to the building where the tower is located, which will not be visible from public view, and it meets setbacks for C2 zone. Section 5L requires that wireless communications facilities be integrated into the existing buildings. The... As mentioned previously, the antennas would be housed within an extension of the existing tower that's already there, which will not or prevent its view from public. There will be no exposed antennas as far as this facility is concerned. This picture shows the location... This picture is taken from Google Maps, and it's... The red circle on the screen shows the location of the proposed tower. This is behind, in between several buildings. So there is another tower that's... A tower feature that's located to the building just to the south of the In-N-Out Burger The project complies with the applicable sections of the city's wireless guidelines and standards for wireless communications facilities. It demonstrates compliance with applicable FCC guidelines, and it qualifies for Class 1 exemption under SEQA. The following slides contain the summary of the appellant's statement and staff's responses. The full text of the appellant's appeal and the staff responses are available as attachment to the staff report. Statement number one by the appellant: The location of the facility would deny access to commercial establishments for residents that are affected or disabled by EMF. The appellant in this first point of appeal also cited the Fair Housing Act. Staff's response, the cited authority pertains to sale or leasing of dwelling units. That's not applicable to this project. The city is prohibited to deny wireless facilities based on health effects if it demonstrates compliance with federal standards. Statement number two... Excuse me. Maps of areas... A request was made... Excuse me, by a member of the public during the meeting, asking for maps of location of all Verizon sites in the city. And it's... A made was also made... A claim was also made on that Verizon has coverage in that area based on individual cell coverage. Staff's response: The city does not maintain a map depicting all active cell sites in the city. However, based on our resident... Resolution 97-197, the applicant is required to provide a propagation map. Propagation map, which is an attachment to this staff report. Attachment number 10. Statement number three: Mr. Kramer's evaluation is unreliable and not accepted by Federal Circuit Court. Dr. Kramer may be able to explain that later. Dr. Kramer has been qualified as an expert witness on RF emissions... Emission requirement, and was not disqualified as an appellant. Or expert, I'm sorry. My apology. Statement number four: Mr. Kramer's statement that ADA does not recognize RF as ADA-covered event was incomplete and misleading, and at the same time, the applicant quoted USA B, United States Access Board. Staff's response: Dr. Kramer agrees with the appellant and he will be... Oh, with the... Disagrees with the appellant, and he may be able to answer any questions on that matter later. Statement number five: ADA requires representations of residents with EMF sensitivity to be taken by the hearing officer without challenge. Staff's response: All statements, testimonies, correspondence related to this project or to this item were considered by the hearing officer before a decision was rendered during the April 15 hearing. Statement number six: D.C. Court of Appeals struck down FCC preemption of local environmental authority. Staff's response is that the decision on case referred to by the applicant does not bear... Or does not have a bearing on this project. Statement number seven: The hearing officer should not have accepted Mr. Kramer's summary that residents' complaints regarding RF be directed to U.S. Congress. Staff's response: Comments were made asking denial based on health concerns on RF emission. Denial based solely on RF concern is prohibited if the project complies with FCC guidelines. Excessive appeal fee. This appeal fee is set... The fee amount is set by the city council. The Planning Commission is not authorized to waive or refund any filing fees. In addition, the filing fee has been set well below cost recovery. Statement number nine: It's a general statement asking that the Planning Commission reverse the hearing officer's approval due to health concern. Staff's response: The project approval is based on compliance with federal standard... Federal regulations and city standards. Project denial, again, based on alleged health concerns related to RF is contrary to federal Environmental review: This project has been deemed categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, which is a Class 1 exemption under existing facilities. As for conclusion, the proposed wireless communications facility complies with FCC RF emission standards, as well as the city's policy and guidelines contained in the city's wireless communications facilities guidelines and standards, Resolution 97-197. Based on substantial compliance with all applicable standards, staff recommends that the Planning Commission deny the appeal, thereby upholding the hearing officer's decision approving the project, as reflected in the attached resolution with the inclusion of the added condition contained in this supplemental. That concludes my presentation. Dr. Kramer and staff is available to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Thank you. Dr. Kramer, did you want to address that one issue?
There were many issues aimed towards me, so...
The one that was referring to you and the court?
I'm sorry.
The one that was referring to you being recognized by the court?
Thirteen years ago, I testified as an expert in a case that AT&amp;T brought against the city of Calabasas... All right, there we go. Thirteen some odd years ago, I gave expert testimony in a case that AT&amp;T brought against the city of Carlsbad. And the judge in that case declined to accept my testimony. He did not disqualify me as an expert, but he said he gave my testimony a little weight. And the interesting thing is that, over all those years later, the process that he was unhappy with has been the process that I and everybody else who does this work uses. So, I was not disqualified as an expert, but the judge, in his prudent... In his prudent authority, decided not to give my testimony any weight. And that's fine. In every other one of the 40 some odd cases I've been involved with as an expert, I've never been, in any of those other cases, disqualified as an expert. And in fact, probably the most important case in recent history, the T-Mobile versus San Francisco case, that went all the way up to the San Franc... That went all the way up to the California Supreme Court. I was the city's expert in San Francisco on that. So, I understand that, you know, as an expert, you put yourself out there, and you give opinions, and sometimes the experts get it wrong, and sometimes the judges get it wrong. But that's why we have an appellate system as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good evening, and thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions that I've tried to phrase in quick yes or no form, just to set the parameters of what we are and are not allowed to use as criteria in considering this appeal. I apologize that we've been through some of this material before, but for the benefit of attendees who... This may be their first hearing of the Planning Commission considering wireless issues. I think it'd be constructive to go through it one more time. Can the Planning Commission use RF safety or emissions as a criterion in evaluating this case?
Only if those RF emissions do not comply with the FCC rules.
Can we use aesthetics as a criterion in evaluating this case?
Yes.
Can we use compatibility with surroundings as a criterion?
That's an aesthetic issue, the answer is yes.
How about alternative site analyses? That was an attachment in our packet. Can we make judgments about the suitability of those alternative site analyses?
Yes.
And finally, why are some... This is really a process question. Why are some cellular applications considered administratively, and others come before the Planning Commission?
The Section 4A of the resolution allows... Basically, I'm sorry, it sits in the policy statement of the 97-197, which states that wireless communications facilities are not necessarily... Not always compatible with the residential PL/OS zones. For that matter, a special use permit to be reviewed by the Planning Commission is required for that... For application in such zones. For this matter, the... For wireless communications facilities in industrial and commercially zoned, since they are commercial in nature, the policy finds that it's compatible use and only requires an administrative processing through a minor modification of an existing or an active special use permit... Special use or development permit.
If I may, Chair?
Mr. Here.
Commissioner Newman. As Mr. Chua said, just to explain it for the public as well, so our 97-197 policy, in Section 4, it's two sections. One is 4A and one is 4B. When we have a commercial setting, industrial setting, it goes to 4A. And 4A is a development permit. In this case, because its location is proposed in a commercial zone, what happened is it went to a minor mod for an existing building... For an existing development permit. And because we do that, we still give the notice to the surrounding neighbors, and under our policies, under our rules, regulations, they have a right to ask for a hearing of those things. If it's 4B, which is residential, open space, PL zone, that's a SUP, and that would automatically go to the Planning Commission for review. So in this case, initially went to just a standard. It checked all the boxes of our policy for the requirements, as Mr. Chua went through all those 5, A through M or L or whatever he said. But what happened in this case is because we did the notice, someone asked for a hearing, our policy is to have that hearing, so we have an administrative hearing. We had that hearing, and now it's also the right for someone who's at that hearing or who's an aggrieved party for that hearing, that decision, to appeal it, and that goes to this body.
And here we are.
And here we are.
Thank you for that explanation. So is it an accurate statement, then, that for areas that are zoned as commercial or industrial, these generally, policy is to hear them administratively first? And for residential areas, they would go straight to the Planning Commission? Is that an accurate statement?
Generally, that is an accurate statement, correct.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chua, what are the height limits for Zone C2? We're dealing with a application for a 45-foot tower here.
Okay, just a matter of clarification. The zoning limit, height limit for C2 zone is 35 feet. However, under Section 25 of the Municipal Code, has an... It has an exemption on height limits. Architectural features such as these towers can exceed that height limit, as long as it doesn't have extra... I mean, floor area for occupancy.
And in fact, I'm familiar with previous cases in which this Commission has approved. I'm thinking of the assisted living facility, I believe, has towers that went up to 49 feet, something like that. Is there an absolute limit on height for towers?
Not necessarily. It's being processed individually and it's through its own merit. An example of... An example of an architectural feature that was extended as part of an application for wireless... for wireless site would be a church that's located on Kimber Drive next to the, uh, fire, um, fire station. In that, in that case, the, uh, the staple was increased in height that exceeds the limit for that, uh, residential zone area. Another case would be the one on Wendy Drive, the church on Wendy Drive, which is also ex, in, in a, which, where the antennas are also installed within a, uh, I would say an architectural feature.
So, just so we're clear, you're saying there are existing cell towers, camouflage or not, in the city in, uh, that exceed thirty-five feet in height?
Yes, there are.
All right. Thank you. The staff report, um, suggests that the city agrees with Verizon's alternative site analysis. Is that, is that an accurate reading of the staff report? Um, with regard to, um, distances again, what is the minimum distance from a cellular transceiver as proposed to a storage unit at this facility?
As proposed on this, I believe this is about a hundred seventy-five feet, between a hundred seventy-five to two hundred feet.
To any storage unit at this facility?
I'm sorry?
To any storage, any customer storage? This is, this is a, this is a storage facility.
Yes, it is.
Right. And I, do I understand correctly, you're saying the minimum distance from any cellular transmitting or receiving equipment to any part of any storage unit is a hundred seventy-five?
Oh, no, no, I apologize. Um, there are, um, there are, let, let me show you the site plan just to, uh... So, there are storage units, there are storage units underneath, oh, this is the elevation, but, I suppose there are storage unit underneath the, um, the existing tower. Just to give you an idea about exactly how far, I don't know. But these are actually on top of the, uh, the facility and Dr. Kramer may be able to give you, uh, the federal requirements as far as distances or the control zone for this facility.
That was my very next question.
Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm just wondering if, if a tenant entering the nearest storage unit or any storage unit within some amount of distance, are they considered safe under FCC rules?
Under the FCC rules, there are no emissions, basically all of the emissions go out towards the horizon, virtually none go down, virtually none go up. So, uh, I've been quoted as saying if, if you're concerned about cell towers, actually the best place to stand is directly below one.
All right. So, there's no, in, in your expert opinion, there's no, there's no risk of exposure to customers of this storage facility?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you for that. That's all the questions I have for now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bass, did you have something? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Chua, for your report. As usual, Commissioner Newman goes through most of the questions that I actually had, so I'm just going to ask a few follow-up. And this is actually probably for Dr. Kramer. Is there anything in the FCC guidelines that allow an evaluation of an ADA issue as part of a determination?
No.
Is there any ADA case yet so far that's come out that actually specifically identified cell towers as a basis for a, a claim?
No. Well, I, I take that back. The, the case that I quoted on was brought forward as an ADA case, but the federal court dismissed it for failure to actually state a valid federal claim.
Okay. And I noticed, uh, Mr. Chua, in your report, you indicated that the DC case that was cited was not relevant. Why?
Uh, that case had to do with Indian lands and part of the rules that were aimed towards Indian lands and they're not applicable to the city of Thousand Oaks at all.
So, just to be clear, the, the ruling had to do something with Indian land specifically?
Yes.
And there's no binding precedent that comes out towards how cities would implement this process, correct?
Has no impact on, on cities outside of Indian lands.
Uh, really quick, if I may, just to follow up, Dr. Kramer. Um, Dr. Kramer's, his point is well taken. It's also important to note for that, that case, um, it is Kiowa Band of Cherokee Indians, Oklahoma, in Oklahoma at all versus Federal Communications Commission. Uh, one of the big focuses in, and we did receive a, a presentation form from the appellant today, Mr. Marshall, um, talks about NEPA. So, we have, in California, you have CEQA and then there's NEPA, which is National Environmental Policy Act. And that case was focused on some of the things that the FCC did as far as how they reviewed the NEPA application. And there was some criticism of that application by the FCC. And so, when the case came down, there was some interesting language that, uh, the Sixth Circuit Court had regarding that analysis or lack thereof. And that might be something that we could use in the future as far as anyone who's looking at that case and says, hey, maybe we can apply that. What is significant though, as Dr. Kramer was saying, is that focus was on NEPA, it's not on CEQA. Um, NEQA, uh, NEPA, excuse me, um, under, again, under CEQA guidelines, we actually talk about NEPA guidelines at times because there are times in California where there might be a case that actually has a CEQA view and a NEPA review. They're going to be rare for our city, um, but under our guidelines, NEPA applies to projects which are carried out, financed, or approved in whole or in part by federal agencies. So, we don't have that situation in this case. So, NEPA would never apply in this kind of, this particular situation. And again, the other important thing is that this, uh, wireless facility is set on a commercial, private facility.
So, to, just to follow up, so to the extent that there were comments, and again, I know the, the appellant actually has inserted some of the quotes with regard to some of the findings and frustrations as to FCC, following the case, has the FCC changed any of its rules that would be applicable to this issue?
Not at this time.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I would just like to make an addition to, uh, one of the questions that was asked by Commissioner Newman.
Please do.
This is regarding, um, question was asked about the height of what, how high can a facility be? There's no limit on the section, on, on the ninety-seven one ninety-seven. However, under our municipal code, uh, um, uh, certain features like this cannot exceed twenty feet over the maximum height of the limit for that specific zone.
Madam Chair, if I may follow up?
Commissioner, yes.
And we, are we within that twenty-foot overage in this case?
Yes, we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chua.
Thank you. Are those all the questions that we have? Okay. Um, thank you. And now we will ask for the applicant or the applicant's representative to speak. Um, you'll have fifteen minutes. Can you please come to the podium? Oh, it is the, the appellate, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So, Mr. Marshall, can you come speak at this time and you will have fifteen And please state your name and city of residence for the record.
My name is Professor Trevor Marshall, or you may call me Dr. Trevor Marshall. And, uh, my residence is, uh, Thousand Oaks, California, has been for thirty-seven years. Thousand Oaks is a unique place to live. Please allow me to explain, uh, the background where I'm coming from because the staff report was complex and full of a lot of errors and I have to paint a background in order to get there. Thousand Oaks is a unique place to live. We live in one of the largest biotech clusters in the world. We have microwave expertise from think tanks like Teledyne, along with experts from just about every other scientific discipline. This planning commission has available to it a staggering range of community expertise. Two thousand eight hundred and fourteen Thousand Oaks citizens have signed their names and addresses to the change.org petition against more cell towers in the city. Many licensed physicians have told you that your actions in placing cell sites close to areas needed for living and shopping are risking our community's health. Yet you continue to approve towers and upgrades at sites which are most definitely ruining the quiet enjoyment which attracted us all to this city. That quiet enjoyment is protected by laws such as the fair housing in the nineteen sixty-eight Civil Rights Act. There's nothing magical about electromagnetic sensitivity. Some people burn easily with sunburn in the sun and they have to use sunscreen to protect themselves when they work outside. The city needs to reduce electromagnetic radiation exposure levels so that those who are EM sensitive can also protect themselves from injury as they go about their daily lives. On March fifth, the county, city council was advised by Dr. Kramer that non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation cannot cause DNA damage, in quotes. Yet this city knows that our biotech is getting FDA approvals for treatments using this same radiation to treat cancers and other human diseases. These FDA approvals have put to bed any notion that non-ionizing RF microwave radiation from cell phones and cell towers does not cause profound biological changes, both good and bad. Nobody from the city staff, nor from the planning commission, has called me to discuss any of the issues I raised in my appeal. For the record, we've only had one day to consider the city's staff report. It doesn't seem to properly address any of the issues I raised and it makes some significant mistakes. The overall problem with staff reasoning is that they seem to be living in the past, relying on outdated rationale. You see, as my appeal clearly explains, everything changed on August the ninth, two thousand and nineteen, when the DC Circuit Court of Appeals handed down a decision that the FCC must comply with the National Environmental Protection Act, NEPA. Further, and this is important, they made it absolutely clear that considerations of human health have to be taken into account in the analysis and chastised the FCC for not having adequately upgraded its radiation guidelines. The rules today are different from those on August ninth, but it goes further than that. On October the first, the DC Circuit Court of Appeals, which is the court that Congress designated for complaints to FCC and is superseded only by the Supreme Court in, in the, in FCC matters, the DC Circuit made it absolutely clear that the FCC was overreaching its authority when using the nineteen thirty-four nineteen ninety-six telecommunications act in an attempt to subjugate state and city environmental considerations. In particular, because the commission's preemption directive lies beyond its authority, we vacate the portion of the two thousand and eighteen order purporting to preempt, preempt any state or local requirements that are inconsistent with the commission's deregulatory approach. The DC Circuit thus reminded the FDA that the telecommunications act does not confer broad state and local preemption authority. Indeed, an October two thousand FCC docket, docket W nine T nine two one seven, expressly disclaimed any attempt to preempt local authority from making decisions on human health. And I don't have time today to discuss why these statements are being made about local authorities not having, can't make any, um, health-related claims. That's a fiction, very good fiction by industry, I might add. In an attempt to answer the points from the DC Circuit decisions which I raised in my appeal, the staff report dismisses them thus. Appellant's sixth basis of his appeal is nonsensical. The city is aware of a decision in a united Kiwatoa Band of Cherokee Indians versus FCC, I have abbreviated that. However, the decision on said case does not have any bearing on the subject project nor factors the planning commission should rely upon in making a decision. To try and help the commission understand whether I or the staff are nonsensical, I will cut through all the legalese in the August ninth order. As it happens, FCC Commissioner Jessica Rosen-Wallsaw sent out a tweet summarizing the ruling. Does that come up on the, over here, do I see it? She said, breaking, and this was sent out on August ninth, the court just vacated a large part of the FCC's 5G deployment strategy. For those paying attention, that means that the agency tasked with the future of connectivity didn't get it right. It's time to go back to the drawing board and do better. And then she give a link, gives a link to the DC Circuit's judgment. The court just vacated, that means it's gone. Those FC regulations are gone, vacated. A large part of the FCC's 5G deployment strategy, or specifically the order for small cell This is exactly what I explained in my appeal and I explained how that was relevant to this particular case. The ground rules have changed, yet this city keeps plowing forward as if nothing has happened, recklessly torturing our citizens with chronic disease and killing them with cancers. Strong words, but believe me, I can back them up, but not in fifteen minutes. So, to help the city staff, I've written a simplified summary. Here it is. The FCC has been defanged. A large part of its regulations have been struck down. Until you know what NEPA issues currently have to be considered and until you know what FCC regulations are still in force, you need to be really careful when you decide to injure residents by allowing potentially non-compliant tower operations. And remember, the city does have control over the operation of cell towers that was specifically put in after the first reading in Congress. There were five mentions denying operation and that was cut out in the final law. You can, you can determine the operations. I will not bother you all with the errors in the staff response briefing. I'll just note that each point in my written appeal stands inadequately answered by city staff, in my opinion. The city blindly follows telecom regulations which are not law, just interpretations of law. And we just saw that the DC Circuit rule, a large part of those FCC regulations actually violate the law and it struck them down. Regulations which our city follows could actually violate the law. We don't know at this point because industry doesn't want to talk about this. No attempt was made to discuss the appeal issues with me. Thus, the only recourse allowed, uh, by the staff report would be in action in the court of law. What saddens me is that over the next few years, this city faces millions of dollars to relocate and compensate hundreds, perhaps thousands of residents who are being injured by the haphazard 4G buildout. Even the bees are being killed by these 4G towers. In particular, this city continues to shirk its responsibilities under the Americans with Disabilities Act and the nineteen sixty-eight Civil Rights Act, Fair Housing. This city has the capability and the duty to comply with FDA and fair housing, yet staff try to make the disabled jump through hoops in order to assert our rights. For example, city attorney said there's no way she can turn the wifi off in this room and run cabled internet to, to the desks here. The DC Circuit told the FCC that radio frequency radiation was something which had to be examined in all NEPA analyses. They used those words, radio frequency radiation. The BioInitiative Working Group, which was also cited, a group of scientists and physicians with whom I am affiliated, can help when examining NEPA compliance. BioInitiative identified a safety standard based on three thousand eight hundred peer-reviewed studies, medical studies, biological studies. We identified minus thirty-seven dBm as a level of exposure which should be used, above which studies have shown, I'm sorry, I'm starting to scatter already. Uh, minus thirty-seven dBm is a level of exposure above which studies have shown, repeated studies have shown that humans have been made ill and minus forty-seven dBm, which should be used as a precautionary level. This safe level is still ten thousand times stronger than the signal needed to give five bars of signal strength on a cellphone. But there is a lot more to routing a telephone call than just having a strong signal from lots and lots of towers. You also have to have a computer network to back it up. You have to have a switching network to switch the calls between towers. So, when you drop a cellphone call, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's no signal there. In fact, in this city, there is enough signal to give you five bars pretty nearly everywhere. Remember that in California, joint and several liabilities makes a one percent liability contributor carry a hundred percent of financial responsibility from a loss in the case of insolvency. In this case, if the city continues to... In this case, if the city continues to accept the industry's fiction that they are prevented from looking after the city's health and going beyond the health to people who are coming to the city council and saying, "My doctor says I am being made ill. I am sick. I am being made ill." It's not nothing to do with health, which is some vague factor in the future. This is right now, right here. And the fiction that the city has prevented from regulating health effects by 332C7B4, which managed to slip through Congress without anybody noticing, although it was discussed, although the health issues were discussed in committee, and there was no preemption at that point, then insolvency of the telco is not even necessary, as a telco would likely use a city's error to deny any liability. Thus, all financial burdens from cellular injury are shifted to taxpayers. That is what the planning commission is risking today, millions, perhaps tens of millions of dollars in compensation and legal fees. Residents have come forward at council meetings and at planning meetings ever since we had this step up to 5G and the 20x increase in power due to crest factor that the telcos used and hid from us when they stepped to 4G. Did I say 4G? I meant 4G. What we have now. It's only been here a few years. To let the city know they're being sick and disabled by the radiation in our city, by the antennas near their homes, by antennas hidden in church steeples, hidden in the fascias of grocery stores, and even hidden on the top of light poles and traffic lights as we walk and drive through our city. Licensed physicians have certified that electromagnetic sensitivity contributes to resident suffering. Yet the city continues to ignore the residents and their physicians. Why won't the city acknowledge that there's a problem and then discuss how to fix it? I recommend that the planning commission continue this hearing to a future date so we can clarify the situation, and we all need more than one working day to responsibly consider the huge pile of documents and issues placed before us this evening. Thank you very much, Chip, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please, do we have any questions of this applicant or the appellant? Commissioner Buss?
Thank you very much for that presentation, sir. I just had one question. Are you aware of any planning department, planning commission, city council in the United States that's taken advantage of the appellate court decision you referenced out of the appellate court in D.C. to deny a claim for a cellular facility?
Well, Dr. Kramer has a very strong reach throughout the whole of California, and his colleagues are testifying to the other cities exactly what he just testified here, that there was no impact. And that's right, I'm not questioning as of now. The problem is, is there a liability as of now?
I'm just asking if you're aware of any--
I'm not aware of any cities in California because they have not been getting the expert advice that we have available here in Thousand Oaks.
I can understand. I'm just asking because I--
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be critical. I'm just, you know, it's a difficult question because this is a big world, you know?
The reason I'm asking is because we're being told that obviously this isn't part of our purview. And as part of a planning commission, we sometimes evaluate construction of various buildings, and one of the things we take into consideration when we do that is the number of parking spaces available. And I'm thinking that, I think about people who have COPD, asthma, lung cancer, people that potentially get lung cancer from cars driving by. If we start taking into account every possible liability for everything, and it's not part of our purview, we can get ourselves into trouble. And so I'm looking for cases where other people have done this.
Well, the D.C. Court of Appeals referred to the Bioinitiative Working Group, who have safety standards that are still 10,000 times higher than what a cellphone needs to operate at--
I understand that.
--that the cellphone standards are created by physicians and biologists, not by people in the telephone industry.
And we're talking about laws that were passed by people who aren't professionals. I understand that, but I'm just looking for any kind of tracking--
No, it's a matter of whether Thousand Oaks wants to be a leader or not.
That's an excellent question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Marshall?
Dr. Marshall?
Dr. Marshall, one more question.
Another question.
Just one more thing. I want to follow up on Commissioner Buss's question. He asked if you're aware of any municipal government taking action as a result of the D.C. Circuit case that you referred to. And you replied that in California, you were not aware of any such case. Are you aware of any such case outside California?
Well, in California, I'm actually aware that Dr. Kramer's law firm has given the same advice to the cities here--
That's not the question I'm asking, sir.
--so I can understand why there's no change here. No, there are a number of cases elsewhere in the country, but at this point, I know of nobody that has managed to figure out exactly what we should be doing. October 1st, which was the second appeal hearing, sent everybody back, the second D.C. Circuit Court of Appeals hearing, sent everybody, including me, back to our books saying, "Wait a minute." And then I found the 2000 FCC regulations saying they're not intending to preempt any health. So everybody is still on the leading edge of understanding what extra freedom the cities have got from the October 1 decision.
But as of, today is the 18th of November, 2019.
No, I said that if Thousand Oaks wants to be a leader, then we can remain a leader, as we have been in the past.
And getting back to my question--
Yeah.
Would it be a leader, what you're asking of us is to be a leader for the entire nation? There's no other municipal government nationwide that has taken it upon themselves to--
I have no idea what municipal governments nationwide are doing. I only hear when cases are resolved one way or the other, and then not very well. I don't have the network that Dr. Kramer does, for example. And in fact, maybe Mandy Jacob from the Ventura County Issues Reform, who is in contact with a lot more groups than me, may be able to give you a better reading on that.
All right. But again, as far as you're aware, one, within California, and two, outside of California, municipal governments are not yet saying, "We're going to ignore the FCC regulation and make our own RF--
Well, this is one of the first--
--determinations.
This is one of the first actions that has been made subsequent to the FCC actions. I know that Napa, someone up in Napa, is also looking into this issue, and in fact, Dr. Kramer's colleague was up there two weeks ago. So there are others--
Again, though, my question is about--
But no, no, there is no precedent--
Local governments may have no determination.
--as of today, there is no precedent.
All right.
And that's why I'm saying we need to kick the ball down the road until we can figure out what is going on, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just a moment, we have one more question. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Marshall, for your presentation. Just want to clarify, I understand your arguments with regard to the cases in the FCC. I just want to make sure I'm crossing off the boxes. Your appeal doesn't appear to cite any violation of city code with regard to its application. Is that correct?
If the city is allowed to make its residents sick, that would be correct. But you know, if the federal government told you to herd up for every, everybody who lived on Hill Canyon Avenue and then throw them into jail, you wouldn't do that.
Believe me--
Because there is a stronger, there is a higher power than what the FCC regulations say.
And we'll get to that.
There is a law is there, and we're even above that on issues of health and safety.
Believe me, I understand, and we'll get to that. I just want to make sure that I am understanding that there's no specific city code that you think is being violated. It's more of the things you're saying in terms of--
No, I've said the city is living behind the times, so there's no city code that addresses this issue.
So, second question. We've been talking about ADA application. Are you aware of any case where an applicant filed an ADA claim because they were denied web accessibility because a cell tower was not put up?
No, but I am aware of cases where electromagnetic sensitivity have given a, have caused cells to be removed and moved back from people whose physicians certified that they were sensitive and being made ill by those.
So there was an actual case where the cell tower--
Oh, there are several of them, yes.
What, does that--
Well, there's one in Oregon. I'd have to really sit down and write them all out. I'm not 100% cogent right now, but I'd be happy to send you a list of them. It's not something that is really new.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Nothing further.
Do you have any other questions, Doctor? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
At this time, we'll now bring up the applicant and state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. Kevin Sullivan from Carlsbad, California. We have a PowerPoint presentation tonight. Also, I'm going to be doing the primary presentation, but we do have other members of the Verizon team here. We've got our planning consultant, an RF engineer, and then also another Verizon representative here, if you have any questions.
I'm sorry, let me interrupt you for one moment. I think, is he supposed to have 15 minutes? There's only five on the clock there.
And do we, how do we move the slides?
Okay.
Oh, you do it? Next, please.
I think we're good, so.
So go into the fourth one, please. Here's where the proposed Kelly Road site is. We've got kind of a coverage objective in this general area, and you'll see later there is really a coverage gap in an area about that large. This is one of the elevations from the site plan. It shows the architecturally-integrated extension to the existing tower, or cupola, on the site. Again, all of the antennas are going to be concealed within this extension. None of them are going to be visible, and the extension complies with the allowable extension of an architectural feature under the city's code. Here is a kind of a general topo map, again, showing the proposed facility about right here. You can see there are some topo lines there. The commercial area that's just to the north of our facility but south of 101 is approximately 25 to 30 feet lower than the ground elevation of our site. And that's important because a rooftop facility at the higher elevation allows us to get up higher, to propagate a signal, and to reach a larger coverage footprint. So here's some information about the use of wireless facilities in the United States. The average home has about 13 connected devices. More than half of U.S. homes are wireless-only for their telephone communications. They're dropping their landlines. And about 90% of U.S. homes use wireless service, including for access to emergency 911. And next is some information about 911 calls. So right now, the data is that over 80% of 911 calls come from cell phones, and there were 240 million E911 calls that were made last year in the United States. So here is an area, again, kind of a map that shows our site right here. There are some existing Verizon sites on the periphery, but none in this general area. So we've got a gap in various parts of the ellipse, inside the ellipse there, and our facility is intending to fill a portion of that gap. I'll also, you know what, I'm going to back up. So Verizon's existing site, Ventu Park down here, as noted in this bullet point, is currently operating considerably over its capacity. And if Kelly Road, this facility, isn't built, those capacity stresses are going to increase significantly. And the problem with capacity stress is it doesn't allow the facility, the wireless telecommunications facility, to operate correctly. A capacity stress or a capacity gap acts in many ways as a coverage gap where you have dropped calls, you have reduced connectivity, you have slow data speeds, and your network just doesn't work very well. And so the Kelly Road site is both a coverage site to cover certain residential and commercial areas nearby. It is also a capacity relief site for Verizon's existing Ventu Park facility. So here is a coverage or propagation map showing the existing Verizon network coverage in the area, and you can see, the green is the coverage objective. That is good penetration of in-building coverage, allows people to use their facilities indoors and get the connectivity reliability and data processing speeds that we all expect now in today's wireless networks. The yellow is more kind of in-car coverage, and then the, it's showing up blue here, is really outdoor coverage, and then the gray is no coverage. But you can see that there are significant areas here where we don't have the green and the yellow, green especially, again, which is a coverage objective for Verizon's network. Here with the Kelly Road site, kind of right in the middle, right there, we are increasing the coverage footprint. We're getting significant in-building coverage both north and south of 101 into commercial areas, into a number of residential areas that are underserved. And Kelly Road is then also connecting down to Ventu Park. We don't have green all the way down, but we now have a better connection and ability to hand off signal and data processing between those sites, and that's what allows both the capacity relief for Ventu Park. So Verizon has, their Verizon RF engineers have studied this area, have determined, many years ago, our application is almost three years old, and there was a lot of analysis that went in before we filed the application to determine that there was a need for the Kelly Road site. And so the RF engineers have taken a look at it. There has been some information or suggestion in the appeal that because Verizon's national network map shows 4G coverage in the area, that the facility isn't needed. That's not true. The in-depth, site-specific analysis by Verizon's RF engineers has determined that there is a significant gap in both coverage and capacity here. And Verizon's own network map specifically states that the coverage areas shown there are just general predictions of where coverages and rates may apply, and that wireless service is subject to network and transmission limitations, you know, caused in part by topography and lack of sites. And so, again, Verizon's RF engineers have specifically determined that there's a need to fill a significant gap in coverage and capacity at this location. So here's some information about the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC regulations with respect to RF health safety. You can look over here, here's the, the FCC came up with their regulations concerning RF health safety in collaboration with a number of other federal organizations. So they did the analysis and came up with the regulations and standards in conjunction with the Environmental Protection Agency, the Food and Drug Administration, and the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, among other federal agencies. And together, collectively, the consensus expert opinion was, "We're going to set these health standards, you know, way up here." You know, that's where, there's a potential where you could get into human health safety concerns, and all of the information from the FCC, from the World Health Organization, and from the American Cancer Society recognize that your typical macro site, which we have proposed at Kelly Road, produces RF energy magnitudes below, well below, these health safety standards that have been set by the FCC. And here, we confirmed that with Kelly Road by going out to RF consultants who did a specific site analysis, took a look-- specific site analysis, took a look at all of the equipment that we were going to be using at the site, presumed that it was going to be operating at maximum power, analyzed the RF energy, and confirmed that this site will operate, again, well below the standards set by the FCC to ensure human health safety. This just talks about code compliance, which staff had already analyzed. So least intrusive means the alternative site analysis. Verizon, like many carriers, would prefer to co-locate with another carrier's facility. There's a streamlined application process for that. There typically isn't all of the construction costs involved. And so co-location is one of the first things that we look for. There were not any co-location opportunities in the area. There wasn't a T-Mobile, an AT&amp;T, a Sprint site that we could co-locate on. If we did, and it would serve the coverage objective that we had, we would go there. We also looked at some other sites, so predominantly in the commercial area just to the north of us but south of 101. And we didn't find that there were any viable solutions there. Again, the ground level elevation in that commercial area is about 25 to 30 feet lower than the ground level there, and we would have to put up a much taller facility to get a coverage footprint and to be able to project our signal. And it just wasn't feasible. There were also issues with respect to a standalone facility would be more visible down there. It could take up parking spaces and could conflict with parking ratios that are required. And so there wasn't anything feasible there. In addition, we took a look at the three-story courtyard by Marriott, but that wasn't viable. Again, it's at a lower elevation. It doesn't give us the coverage footprint that we would like. In addition, the construction activity that could go on for three, maybe four months there is typically not something that is allowed by hotels. Our planning consultants have dealt with thousands, if not tens of thousands, of these applications, have dealt with hotel properties and hotel chains, and typically are told there's no way that the hotels are going to allow that kind of construction activity to go on while they have guests there. Often, they will require, if you want to put a site there, you've got to go buy out all of the rooms that would be affected. And so it wasn't something that was economically feasible. So we did look for, trying to stay out of residential. We found this commercial site and this existing commercial property use that's been ongoing for over 30 years, and that's where we decided to locate our architecturally-integrated concealed facility. So that is the end of our presentation, and we're available to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, Mr. Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I thought I wanted to start just with a quick procedural question. Are you aware of the additional condition that was provided to us as item 16?
Yes, we've seen that, and we have no objection to that condition.
So you'd be fine with approving that, going along with that?
Yes.
And then just back a little bit, and again, I know the questions from the audience are regarded as this. So the FCC has certain guidelines as to this process. Is it possible that somebody could still suffer electromagnetic sensitivity even with the fact that you're fitting within these guidelines?
I'm not qualified to answer that question. I know that the health safety standard is set up here. Our facility is operating well below that. And the law states that as long as we operate within the FCC guidelines, which we clearly do here, then the city is not able, under federal law, to regulate the facility on that basis.
Understood. All right, thank you, nothing further.
Any other, Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening.
The appellant referenced a tweet from an FCC commissioner regarding a district court ruling about 5G service. And my question with regard to this application is, will it provide 5G service on day one? It's turned out.
No, this is a 4G site. It is not a 5G site.
All right. As provisioned, when it comes online, 4G?
Correct. The facilities, the antennas, the equipment, the facilities we have is for part of our 4G network, not our 5G network.
Is there a timeline at some future point for delivering 5G service from this site?
Not that I'm aware of. And typically, 5G service is delivered oftentimes by small cell facilities.
Right.
And not these macro sites. The width dimension is less than 10 feet. The macro sites, as I understand it, I'm not an RF engineer, but the macro sites are We surmise that it was around nine feet. needed for backhaul, for kind of the data processing. So 10 feet high by nine feet wide, approximately. But I don't know that these macro sites themselves would specifically offer 5G service.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
All right, so is it a fair statement, then, that as provisioned on day one and
Thank you.
We're about to go to public comments.
for the foreseeable future, the service being delivered here is 4G and not 5G?
Before we do that, I will put into the record, we had two statement cards for people who
That's correct.
do not want to have a public comment.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
I had one quick question. One of them didn't actually have a statement. It just checked a box that said it was opposed. What was the actual dimension of the tower that is proposed? The other one had a statement opposing, and I did pass the statement along to my fellow
So I know it's 10 feet high, and it is. How wide?
commissioners to read it.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that.
So at this point, we'll go to public comments. You'll need to fill out a speaker card, and right now, I have nine of them, which means That's okay. that each speaker will have four minutes. At the time you are called, you will state your name and city of residence for the record. And so I will start right now with Heather Swanson.
I'm sorry, one more. We have, we have four minutes for each speaker because my chart up here. I'm going by my chart.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Dear Commission, my name is Heather Swanson. I'm a 35-plus-year resident of the Cuyahoga Valley. I currently reside at 633 Cuyahoga Grande Court in Newbury Park with my three youngest of five children. I am EMF-sensitive. I'm here to object to the planned installation of an additional small cell tower in the In-N-Out Burger Shopping Center. I would like to cite a couple of, in response to Nelson Buss's question earlier, I would like to cite a couple of examples of communities that have responded to their citizens' requests to slow, stop, halt the continued rollout of 5G or the installation of small cell towers, 4G, and so forth, that are causing and creating the EMF-sensitive response to community citizens. There is, actually, I'm quoting from CBSLocal.com, and that is an article that says that cell tower on school campus is suspected of causing students' cancer was removed. That is in Ripon, California, and the cellphone tower that parents claimed caused cancer in four elementary students is being removed. This is from March 25th of 2019. Parents fought for years with the district after four children were diagnosed with some form of cancer. That's just a small clip from the article to give you an example of a community that has had success objecting to these small cell installations. Sprint did respond and remove that small cell tower. There's another case in Bay Area. The Bay Area is specifically Mill Valley, a small town located just a few miles north of San Francisco. This is quoting from TechCrunch.com. It's basically stating that the Mill Valley voted unanimously, this is from one year ago, to effectively block deployments of small cell 5G wireless towers in the city's residential areas. Through an urgency ordinance, which allows the city council to immediately enact regulations that affect the health and safety of the community, the restrictions and prohibitions will be put into force immediately for all future applications to cite 5G telecommunications equipment in the city. Applications for commercial districts are permitted under the past ordinance. It says, "Blocks on 5G deployments are nothing new for Marin County, where other cities, including San and Selmo and Ross, have passed similar ordinances designed to thwart 5G expansion efforts over health concerns." So just basically stating that, to give examples, as was requested, that there are other objections that have been successful. And the most significant that I am aware of is in Ripon County, due to cancer being caused in children, asserting that it has been caused in children. But that a strong enough correlation was indicated to basically cause the small cell tower to be removed by Sprint. And that is what we are trying to prevent for our community. That is what we don't, we don't want to see, and we're basically objecting on the grounds that a faster speed of cell service by nanoseconds is a want, not a need.
Okay, I need you to wrap it up, please.
Okay, so that is all. Thank you very much.
Hold on a minute, let's see, are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Peggy Rosenberg. And after her will be Kenna Alman. So Ms. Rosenberg, state your name and city of residence for the record.
Sorry, I'm, what did you say?
Please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Okay, thank you. I'm Peggy Rosenberg, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity during which I want us to consider whether Mr. Kramer is a consultant or a lobbyist. The distinction impacts what we're doing, I believe. He claims he, quote, "deals with safety concerns raised by the public," end quote. Really? When has he actually satisfied or resolved any safety complaint for any member of the public? My guess is maybe never. In fact, in his ordinance draft changes, he, quote, "protects the city from blight," end quote. Why no provision for protecting the public from RF emissions? Why the deliberate dismissal of health impacts? Mr. Kramer admits he makes draft changes to old codes, which is less work for him. This should never be allowed by the city. The requirements in his ordinances are one-sided in favor of the wireless industry to the detriment of the general public by allowing these poisoning delivery services too close to residents. For more than 25 years, Mr. Kramer has served over 1,000 private and government clients as a wireless technology and deployment advisor, compliance inspector, and telecom site lease negotiator. Clearly, he's an industry promoter and partisan and not an objective advisor on public policy. And not an independent contractor, as is stipulated in his contract with the city. He touts that he co-wrote FCC's safety guide. What does he know about the health effects of RF? He doesn't provide objective information. A perfect example is when he pointed to the top of a ruler to explain measuring the effect of RF emissions. The unprofessional safety explanation indicates incompetency in an area in which he's supposed to be an expert. On paper, he represents public interests in locating wireless facilities, which in fact, doesn't seem to be the case. Why would a municipality hire an industry-biased lawyer to help locate facilities? His bias in favor of the industry is a clear indication of his being a Trojan horse consultant. Excuse me. If he's supposed to protect the city, as is stated in the contract, then why is he promoting private antennas on public poles? His actions speak to a person who is colored by his own business interest. He's licensed and endorsed by the FCC, which is the most captured federal agency. I just can't imagine how there could be more evidence of a conflict of interest. Whoever introduced or proposed the 250,000 expenditure is the person at fault for being loose with public funds, and we have the right to know what we, the people, the taxpaying citizens of Thousand Oaks, receive for that money. Are you paying him to tell you what we want to hear? Is that a wise use of public resources? Have you vetted him for wireless industry loyalties? If not, why not? It seems obvious that Mr. Kramer's actions are not those of a consultant, and it's inappropriate for the city to hand public fund to lobbyists. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions? I'm sorry? Next, we have Kenna Alman. And after that will be Susan Wineinger.
Hello, my name is Kenna Alman. I live in Westlake Village. I'm a mother of two, Pepperidge Farm business owner, student, and a lover of my community. Some people want to claim that non-ionizing levels of radiation are safe, but let's please look further. Let's take that time. A study by Dr. Alan Frey proved that non-thermal levels of microwave radiation can break the blood-brain barrier and harm the circulatory system. The National Toxicology Program, our own government, released a study that revealed that not only does 4G and all these radiation cause cancer, but it breaks the DNA. DNA breakage is a mechanism by which cancer cells can be created. We've seen this happen already to friends of ours in Moore Park. They're sick, and this won't stop unless people in your shoes take a stand. Even the Wi-Fi radiation we've already allowed into our kids' schools and in our homes are classified by the WHO and the IARC as a 2B carcinogen. Let's not continue to add to the biologically plausible negative health effects that our kids are already facing by turning us into the FCC's lab rats. Is a faster download more important than our kids? We all have to lay our heads down on our pillows at night and feel good about ourselves. Please make a choice that allows you to do that. I get that this is your job, and at the end of the day, we are really all in this together. We're not against each other. We're all, we all just want a better tomorrow. We all just want to save our kids and do what's right and best. So if a tiny voice inside your head is questioning if this is healthy for us, please allow that voice to get louder than your paycheck and come back down to earth to the things that really matter. Your families will be in danger of these towers as well. Please think of the people who mean most to you. Think of your children, think of your mom, your dad, whoever means most to you. Think of that person. Let's find a better way. Maybe fiber optics. I don't know, I'm not a professional, but there has to be a better way. does 4G and all these radiation cause cancer, but it breaks the DNA. DNA breakage is a mechanism by which cancer cells can be creative. We've seen this happen already to friends of ours in Moor Park. They're sick, and this won't stop unless people in your shoes take a stand. Even the Wi-Fi radiation we've already allowed into our kids' schools and in our homes are classified by the WHO and the IARC as a 2B carcinogen. Let's not continue to add to the biologically plausible negative health effects that our kids are already facing by turning us into the FCC's lab rats. Is a faster download more important than our kids? We all have to lay our heads down on our pillows at night and feel good about ourselves. Please make a choice that allows you to do that. I get that this is your job, and at the end of the day, we are really all in this together. We're not against each other. We're all, we all just want a better tomorrow. We all just want to save our kids and do what's right and best. So if a tiny voice inside your head is questioning if this is healthy for us, please allow that voice to get louder than your paycheck and come back down to earth to the things that really matter. Your families will be in danger of these towers as well. Please think of the people who mean most to you. Think of your children, think of your mom, your dad, whoever means most to you. Think of that person. Let's find a better way. Maybe fiber optics. I don't know, I'm not a professional, but there has to be a better way. Verizon people, why don't you guys find a better way? Find something that can be safer. Find a loophole. Let's find a loophole in the criteria so that we can deny this application. I understand the criteria that Mr. Newman had mentioned earlier, but if we work together, we can change that to a more humane criteria. The FCC guidelines should be challenged. Which side of history will you be on? This is our chance to take a stand and do what's right. So let's please do that. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Weininger, and after that, Aslam Kohar.
Hi, I'm Susan Weininger. Good evening, and I am a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm addressing the propagation of cellular antennas again here in our city. I think it's necessary to speak about the transmitters because it is increasingly urgent as you are approving more and more of them for a variety of reasons to the detriment of all of us. You've heard all of the arguments against your actions, and we will keep repeating them until you start protecting us. We need to be protected from all of the negative and damaging effects of the new and existing transmitters. Thank you.
Thank you. Aslam Kohar, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced it. And then after that, Krista Pedersen.
Good evening. My name is Aslam Kohar. I'm a resident of Newberry Park. I'm actually one of the folks who lives directly behind this proposed tower. It's going to be, I think I checked, about 150 feet from my back wall. I think, without going into the presentation about health effects, because that's going to be very nicely articulated and dismissed by our experts here, I want to get into kind of the aesthetic parts. I currently have a nice view behind my home. I bought this particular property with the intention in mind that there's a lower setback, and the commercial property is also lower. Now, with this particular tower, there's going to be a 10 by 10, as the gentleman described, structure directly behind me. So that's obviously going to have an impact. Number two, just the knowledge of having a cellphone tower in the area has already had an impact. My next-door neighbor, who just bought the property, I think about two months ago, put it up for sale. Why? Because they have a, I think, a year-and-a-half-year-old son. And these people are engineers. The husband works for some biotech company, I think, in Oxnard, and the wife works for Amgen. So people know this stuff just by virtue of the information being out there, not being fully cemented. There's enough evidence out there in the scientific community to argue against that. So that's the negative impact that I am up against. I also was looking at the alternative site analysis by the experts here and their heat masks. By the way, I'm an electrical engineer. I went to UCLA, and I have studied RF engineering and analog circuit design, so I know what I'm talking about. The coverage piece that he's talking about can be very easily fulfilled by placing the tower in a gazillion of other locations. On Newberry Road, if you just go past Kelly, there's an entire empty lot where the old, I think, Thousand Oaks school used to be. That construction facility is completely open. So what does it take to raise the tower by another 30 feet and give them the necessary coverage that they need? I'm directly behind this particular thing. My cellphone works just fine, and I really don't need this coverage. I mean, if that's the point that we're trying to address here. So that needs to be, I think, taken a look at. I also believe that, and this was a question that I asked in the previous hearing, that they did not do a reasonable, enough due diligence of alternative site analysis. Just by going to the hotel and being dismissed because the hotel guests are going to be inconvenienced and there's a cost, you have not taken into account the neighbors who are 150 feet from this particular location and falling back onto the FCC 1996 Act. So I really, really ask the council to take a look at their analysis, and I assure you that there are many feasible locations that they can go to. Of course, there's going to be a little bit of a cost, but can it alleviate some of the concerns here? Absolutely will. So that's one suggestion. Now, the gentleman here also raised a question about, you know, previous cases, and you asked that question as well. There have been several cases where the city or the carriers have been challenged, and yes, they did not go on the grounds of the FCC rule per se, but there was enough momentum in the community and enough case support, not case, information built up in the court system to basically articulate that there is indeed a hazard. I will again not call it that because he's going to dismiss it. The health hazard, right? People are getting cancer. Yes, it's not prevalent. We're not reading about it in the news, but I assure you, as somebody being in this industry, this is something that's going to absolutely come up in our lifetime. So now let's get back to kind of the solution state again. The solution is very simple, in my opinion. We can't run away from wireless technology. These people are going to continue to push for this thing. I'm a consumer. I work in the industry as well. But I think there are some safe and responsible steps that we can take. And I ask you, the council, because this is a city I call home. It's a beautiful place, like everybody else said. Many cities have taken a proactive stance, and the proactive stance is 1,500 feet from residential areas, 1,000 feet minimum. Calabasas has done it. Palo Alto has done it. So these are things that are available.
You need to wrap it up.
So in essence, my fundamental case is on aesthetics and potentially some solutions with regards to where it needs to go, because I foresee that I will probably sell my house also. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Krista Pedersen, and after that will be Greg Tijian.
Good evening. My name is Krista Pedersen. I am a resident of Thousand Oaks for almost 47 years now. Was born here. I wanted to start off by mentioning that I had a meeting with a building biologist years ago, and he said, you know, RF and EMF is the new smoking, and it's going to take a little time. It took a long time to realize what the effects were, but it will be known. There's a lot of covering up, but it will be uncovered. Regarding this macro site, please allow us to look more closely at the gap in coverage that you claim exists. We'd like to analyze this. A group of concerned citizens visited the build-out spot this weekend and were able to get access, wireless access, with no difficulty at all. We have engineers and building biologists and technicians who are happy to measure and analyze any supposed gap free of charge. Signals may be weak in certain areas, but for some carriers, but inside a home, cellphones make an automatic transition to Wi-Fi. So do we need another tower for coverage inside of our houses? We don't. These 4G towers and their antennas, they're making us sick. Doctors in our local areas agree that radiation makes people sick. The National Toxicology Program, our own U.S. government study released last November, says that 4G doesn't only cause cancer, but it breaks the DNA. We don't need any more towers in Thousand Oaks. And if you approve this, it only goes to show that you're choosing money over the safety and health of the people of Thousand Oaks. Knowledge is spreading. More and more people are, every single day, becoming aware of the dangers of these towers. The stores in the In-N-Out strip mall will lose business because residents won't support them, knowing what they know now about the harmful nature of RF. There's already a tower there now. No build-out is necessary. Verizon may tell you they need more capacity, but most of their towers aren't even at full capacity. They may tell you they need to up their service, but Thousand Oaks is a slow-growth area. We don't need more towers. We are already saturated with coverage all over our 40 square miles. There should be no build-out at the In-N-Out strip mall. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Greg Tijian, and I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name if I do. And after that, Mandy Jacob.
My name is Greg Tijian. I'm an orthopedic surgeon. I live in Westlake Village. I've been a physician here for about 20 years. I am exposed to X-rays. I have actually a certificate from the Department of Public Health in radiation safety. I'm not an expert in RF, but I do understand radiation. I've become more aware of this when a tower is being proposed across the street from my house, about 75 feet. So I've researched and read a lot. During my presentation in August, I presented 100 references in the BioInitiative Report. My question is, who is the city's medical consultant, licensed medical physician? I've talked to a lot of my colleagues, and this is a real thing. The radiation does create DNA problems and results in cancer. Think of it like your kidney function. Somebody may be, the dose for vancomycin, for example, is one gram every eight hours. However, if you have a kidney issue, the dose is much less than that. So there are people who have sensitivities despite what a standard number is. So you can't just use a standard number because we are all different. We all have different sensitivities and different systems in our body to process. So this does create the need to look at individual cases, and there are plenty of people who have presented with sensitivities. So I think that's the real thing, such as, for example, the firemen. You can't put these towers on firehouses because the firemen have a sensitivity to this or have an issue with it. So why can it be next to residences 150 feet from people's houses? That I don't understand. So my questions are, has anybody read the references? Has anybody read the BioInitiative Report? Who is the medical consultant for the city to give a medical? I don't, no one here is a physician, medical physician. So I would like to see some medical information on behalf of the city for the residents. The other question I have is, all these calculations that people are saying, as it seems like it's a calculation on a piece of paper, who actually took a device to the ones that are already in the city that are existing and actually measured that to see truly what is that number? Because there's a number that is trying to be below. So has anybody actually physically measured that? An independent consultant? That's, I would like to know that specific question as well, or answer that question as well. So I don't know what the rush is. Why can't we, today's like the most discussion I've ever seen for the wireless towers coming into town. Why can't we just sit down as a community and talk about it rather than just having a four-minute presentation and one day to make a decision? That's it.
Thank you. Mandy Jacobs, and then Vedam Mazus.
Hi, I'm Mandy Jacob from Newberry Park. There's so many issues here, it's just going to be hard to cover in four minutes. I first of all wanted to say, you know, it's actually, it's such a travesty that Professor Marshall hasn't been consulted. I mean, just from a plain fact that he actually paid for this appeal, all skill set aside, he really should be consulted. We keep hearing people talk about the BioInitiative. He's part of that. We keep hearing people asking about doctors. He has his own protocol called, I mean, go on Google, Dr. Marshall's Protocol. I mean, this is a man who knows the biological effects of it. He has, like Kramer, they were both engineers. I mean, I don't have time to read his bio, but he's a life senior member of IAEA. That's the engineering part. And AARL, he's been a qualified engineer. He was doing microwave design from the '60s, and then in the '70s, he went into the technology behind 4G. And then in the '80s, he designed the RF broadband, and then he went into the biological. So that's a person that we really should be consulting with, and he'll do it free of charge. We don't have to pay him a quarter of a million dollars. I wanted to go into my organization. We came here, we weren't in an organization. When we were talking to the city council in February, we were just concerned citizens. Susan started with me. And we grew to Ventura County Issues Reform, so we're now California Issues Reform. Mr. Bass, I have hundreds of stories to tell you. The thing is, you're asking for, you know, you were asking about any noted commission. It never goes to the public because the city managers want to just put it under the carpet, and they don't want the telecoms to hear about it. So I'm more than happy to give you those. We have lots of different ways, and lots of cities that have come up with really creative ways of getting around it. So happy to share that with you. But with our organization, there are five cities. And then the other problem with you as the commissioner is that your city council has not protected you. There are so many, you keep asking for experiences. These, I mean, October 1st was a month and a half ago, but I can tell you, in the process when the August 9 ruling came out, there are three cities, and you follow the money, Malibu, Ojai, and Beverly Hills. They can pay, and they are writing ordinances to protect the health and safety of their residents, and you can ask for those ordinances. So do we want to attract these people that are at that caliber? Or do we want to be in Oxnard or Camarillo? Okay, yeah, we had a rip on California. I want the Verizon people to know. Sprint took down their tower as soon as those cancer cases came out, and that was operating at a 0.01% strength. Verizon obviously doesn't even know how, I mean, we're just another number to them. They didn't even know the width and the depth of the tower. I mean, can we, this is where I want to go. I've got so many notes, but we don't need to make the decision straight away. I mean, we have, the NEPA is a huge one, as far as I'm concerned. The Et al part of that court case was not just the Cherokee Indians. It was struck down for a reason, and we can apply that. Why don't we get a NEPA study? I mean, why are we taking the telecoms maps and research papers? Why are we not doing that ourselves? Anyway, just going back to the overview, I don't know how much the city attorney and the city councils talk to you, but in February, we were already warning about the ADA people. So now we have logged with the city attorney. He has six ADA complaints. Now, the city of Thousand Oaks had one in the '80s, and you know how much one costs? We've got, we are working on 70-plus more of those complaints coming in. So you do the math. I mean, do you want one telecom lawsuit, or do you want 70 ADA's complaints? The other problem to that is the Fair Housing Act. We have four members that are leaving the city of Thousand Oaks. One is already sold. So again, this starts getting ugly because they're going to start looking for damages and negligence, and I'm so sorry that the problems come to you because your city council should have protected you with the ordinance. So really, for me, if I was in your situation, I'd just kick the bucket down the road and just appeal for more time. Get a NEPA environmental review. You've got time. This doesn't have to go up because they want it up immediately.
Thank you.
Let's just research. Thank you.
Vedam Mazus.
Good evening. Vedam Mazus, resident of Newberry Park since 2003, local beekeeper. You might remember me. I offered you experiment with the bees, and the main reason why I'm in this movement against the 4G, 5G towers is just because of the bees. But also, you know, today I totally changed the script because a lot of intelligent people shared their, you know, views and kind of changed the direction. And I want to show you from my past, I mean, from my life experience of 60 years in both countries, Ukraine or former Soviet Union and United States. I love nature since my childhood, and even though I was born in capital of Ukraine, city Kiev, and after finishing my, you know, degree to become a teacher, I finished, completed the school, fishery, hatchery school, I guess that would be translation. And right next to us was a beekeeping school, and that's my love for living species were developed greatly. I tried to escape from the city and find, you know, nature. Unfortunately, as a biological species, people lost or maybe even never had the ability to detect level of electromagnetic radiation. And in order to detect the level of radiation, we have to use the meters. And recently, I was given as a gift one developed by Dr. Marshall, Trevor Marshall, and now I annoy my children at home because it's a really powerful mirror, and it shows the sound, you know, once, and then also show the green and red light. And, you know, what I did, I put my Wi-Fi, what's called router, on a mirror, so it shuts off at night, but a signal is still strong, and I cannot kill it. So I'm looking for, but what I'm trying to tell you is that it's obvious that we have powerful radiation around us. And back from my Soviet Union life, I was 1,000 kilometers, which is approximately 600 miles away from Chernobyl when Chernobyl nuclear station exploded. And then... And then when I came back to Kiev from south of Ukraine, even though I just mentioned that people as species probably lost that ability to detect the radiation, but immediately I started to feel that sore throat, and I shared with my mom. Oh, by the way, I forgot to tell you that Soviet Union government hid for, hid it for people, that fact that it wasn't even explode until Sweden and some Western countries showed up the high level, and then they had no way out to, to hide it. One more fact, I have three dogs in my house. And before, I've got the, the meter from Dr. Marshall, I, my dogs, I've noticed, they sleep in one room, in the kitchen, in one corner, all three. And then accidentally, I was exhausted after working with bees, and I had that meter in my hand, and I realized, bow, no beeping, no sound, nothing, zero, zip, green light. And then I said, wow, look, these creatures, they have ability to detect where the radiation is absent. There's no radiation, and we have no, no ability. We have to use devices, as I mentioned. And, you know, I want to mention that life and health is the most important regardless of your and other people or our worldview, creation or evolution. So my grandfather has managed to live 101 year, and he survived World War I, feminine Ukraine, revolution, four years in, I mean, three, three years he was captured and kept in a German camp. And that guy, you know, kind of, I'm looking at him and he, you know, he didn't have all of this exposure of radiation. He, he just had everything in his life, you know, worst one.
Thank you.
He never had, he never had a luxury. So I'm just begging you to look closer, and I don't want to see you as opponents. I want to see you as other people mentioned, even Mr. Kramer. Ironically, we fight for your health.
I need you to wrap it up, please.
We fight for your children and grandchildren.
I need you to wrap it up, please.
Yeah, health. So then, let's work together and come up with a solution against the, the powerful radiation that destroys us lives and health, life and health.
At this point, I'd like to ask the staff for their comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to address two issues that were brought up by the, by the public speakers. One of them regarding Mr., that was brought up by Ms. Rosenberg regarding Mr. Jonathan's payment. I made this, I pointed this out at the public, at the administrative hearing, which was also brought out the same issue regarding his pay. Mr. Kramer is paid through a fund that's coming from the applicant. Every wireless application in the city comes with a $3,000 deposit. That deposit is the money, I mean, the $3,000, that $3,000 deposit is provided by the wireless facility applicant. This comes in every application for wireless facility. Mr. Kramer's pay is taken out of that, out of that fund. So no public fund is being used to pay Mr. Kramer in the review of these wireless facilities. As far as the aesthetics is concerned, may I direct you to the monitor? I've taken some pictures of the buildings that are potential for, for a wireless facility. This is a building, a restaurant building on Newberry Road that is right next to the freeway, and that has a tower feature that if you increase the size of it or the height of it, will look very disproportionate. Here is another view of that same building. This is the Chili's building, by the way. And as you can see, it lines up almost perfectly against the ridge line. I will point out the ridge line on the screen here with the mouse. You see this ridge line right here? The goals and policy of our scenic viewshed protection is to prevent as much as possible silhouetting against those ridge lines. So if you look at this, that roof right there almost coincide with that ridge line. Another picture, and if we, if we use this as the alternative site, the increase in height would cause silhouetting against that ridge line, which is a big no-no as far as the viewshed policy is concerned. I'm sorry. This is the other facility, which is, I believe, the post office facility under the residential, I mean, the retail, retail store. Again, if you increase the size of this, it's going to look uneven with the building, with the required height that Verizon has. This is a view of the, the, that general area from across the freeway. And as you can see, the buildings are pretty low profile, and I'm going to run the pointer of the mouse across it. These are all low profiles designed not to silhouette against the, against the ridge line. This is the Chili building, which is one of the, one of the sites. This is the hotel. There's another tower. This is probably, this is the tower that I've showed earlier, earlier on. And that tower that we're looking at right now at the storage facilities, most likely this one right here, well behind those trees and the intervening buildings. So here's another view of that hotel, or the commercial building. So staff has looked at all these, these alternative sites and comparing it against the proposed facility. Staff believes that this proposed facility is the one that will comply most with 97, 197. So that is why staff believe that, believes that this is the best alternative as far as this project is concerned. Thank you. And Mr. Kramer would like to have some, to respond to some of the issues.
I have a lot to unpack, and I'll start with Professor Marshall's comments. He said that the FCC regulations are gone. They're not. He said that the ground rules have changed. They haven't. That the FCC rules are not struck down. In fact, to the extent that the courts have directed the FCC to go back and review it, that is something that is for the FCC to do. But in the meantime, the court did not strike down the FCC rules. So the rules that were in effect in August are the same rules that are in effect today, which are the same rules that were in effect a year ago. So from your perspective, as commissioners who have taken an oath to uphold the law, just like I've taken that same oath as an attorney, there is still the law. Now, there was a comment made that the FCC regulations are not law. In fact, they are. The FCC is the expert agency charged by Congress with enacting the rules in federal law, and this specifically, as was cited earlier, 332(c)(7). That's the federal code. So Congress doesn't write operational rules. They have expert agencies, regardless of how we may think of the expert agency, and I have my own quibbles with the FCC, but to the extent that they are the agency delegated by Congress to enact the laws that Congress has passed, that's what they do, and those rules have the force of law. You know, when I, I was studying for my doctorate, and I had to go through all of the court cases, every single court case that was both published and unpublished, that was discoverable on the issue of RF and, and home values and all of that. And the courts recognize the FCC. I mean, there just is no question about it, and nothing has changed. Moving on to some of the speaker comments, the speaker comments were generally all about RF, and I get it, but there were a couple that require some additional unpacking. Ms. Swanson talked about the ripon, the ripped-in case where Sprint removed the tower, and they did. Subsequent to that, if you continue down, you'll find that in fact, what was determined to be the cause of the cancer is the fact that there was an old Nestle's plant that was nearby that had discharged carcinogens into the ground, and that's the causal link there. Did Sprint remove the tower? Sure. But was that the actual cause of the cancer? Based on published reports in the Sacramento Bee, Modesto Bee, and the CBS, their toxicologists have called, had put it back at the, the cause to be Nestle's discharge of toxic materials. Ms. Rosenberg doesn't like me very much, but okay, so let me unpack some of that. Will just talked about my contract, quarter of a million dollars. So did, so did Ms. Rosenberg. My contract is a contract that has a maximum, but as Will indicated, I'm paid as a pass through, through the city. Why is that? Because we won't accept any contract with a city where we are paid directly by a wireless company. We have to clearly have our allegiances to our city client, not to the person who pays us, who may be not the city. So we do that because ethically, that's the right way to do. Could we do it the other way? Sure. And we could still, still do the same work, but this is intended to remove it. So the quarter of a million dollars is just a placeholder for budgeting purposes. It is not paid by public funds, to the extent that, for example, there was an indication earlier this evening that this hearing is being done at less than cost, and I'm being paid to be here tonight. A portion of that will come from the city, but that's the city's determination. My allegiances to the city, as it has been for the last 32 years that I have been consistently and constantly employed by this city as its expert. Not all obvious for the wireless industry. In fact, in the current FCC process, the current proceeding, where the wireless industry wants to gut Section 6409, we are the only firm that was called out by name by the wireless industry as being a bad actor because we're actually out there enforcing the FCC rules. They don't like that. So only telecom law firm was named by name by the wireless industry. Everyone else was just referred to obliquely. I take that, by the way, as quite a badge of honor. It's nice to know that the industry doesn't like what we're doing, but what we're doing is enforcing the FCC rules to the maximum extent possible. And in the 6409 proceedings that are going right now, the City of Thousand Oaks is participating. They're one of the named parties opposing the FCC's, well, the, the industry's current petition to gut 6409. So this city and the city council have taken a position in the right forum, and I've talked about this before. This is an area where you, if you're going to fight your battle, you got to fight it on the right battlefield. One of the complaints from Professor Marshall is that I've said that this needs to be taken to Congress. It's right. That's really where these rules come from. They come from Congress. And we as cities, and we as oath-taking participants in this process, can't violate the law as much as the law may be offensive to some, and may not be offensive to others. This just isn't the forum for that fight. To the extent I'm a biased lawyer, I am. I'm biased towards the rule of law and the enforcement of the rules that exist today, not the rules that some people might wish them to be. And I'm, I'm hoping that I'm not going to mispronounce it, but if I do, I'll ask the speakers forgiveness. Mr. Coker, I believe, if that's, again, I apologize if that's not correct, referenced setbacks and mentioned City of Calabasas. The City of Calabasas is actually in the process of revising their wireless ordinance, which was one of the most restrictive for a number of years, to actually allow for small cells to come into residential neighborhoods, because the city did a citywide survey and found by just overwhelming numbers that the public was not satisfied and they wanted cell sites. So Calabasas, its current code is restrictive, and the city council has directed their Communications and Technology Commission basically to relax in a reasonable and prudent way those restrictions. Dr. Tajan talked about who is the city's medical expert. We don't have one that I'm aware of, and it's probably best put because this isn't a medical issue. This is an issue of law. Because as much as the public is concerned, and I really, I believe it's heartfelt, I believe these are very concerned people who are worried about this issue, but this is not the place or the forum where those issues get resolved. So again, although I will disagree with how it was characterized, really, the, the right field for this argument to go down, the health issues, the issues of impacts, is at the federal government level. At Congress, frankly, because Congress can control the FCC, and the FCC is in some ways out of control now. I get it, but it's still the law that we have to follow. And I, I think, unless you've got some more questions, I think I've really covered the broad strokes of, of the testimony that came in tonight, but also reminding us all what our duties are, which is to follow the federal rules and the places to change those rules. And in this case, and I'll reaffirm it just for the record purpose, our firm reviewed the RF analysis that was independently produced by Verizon's engineers, and we review that because the site's not built. So we review the maximum power, just as Verizon's attorney talked about, and we compare those to the federal standards, and this site complies with those federal standards. So as a, as a legal issue, as unsatisfying as it is to the public, that concern about RF is not a consideration that you can take into account when you make whatever decision you may make or not make tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Dr. Kramer. I had a quick question, if you don't mind. One of the speakers referenced that you can't put cell towers on firehouses. That confused me.
It's confusing because it's not correct. There is no law and no regulation in the state of California or in the federal code that prohibits it. There is a carve-out in one rule, Assembly Bill 57, back from 2015, that said that fire stations are outside of a deemed approved process, but there's zero prohibition about cell sites on fire stations.
Thank you. Do we have any?
If I may, Chair, really quick before council or commissioners ask more questions. I do want to add to Dr. Kramer's comments and staff's comments on a couple of issues that were raised tonight, and for the public, just to give them additional information that I think is imperative that they understand from cities' perspective. The first one is, you heard a quick comment, a very short comment about ADA access and accessibility to our meetings. We actually provide that on our agenda. If people have concerns of any disability, they can contact the city clerk or the Planning Commission Clerk's Department and ask for, and discuss it, and we can make arrangements for that. For this particular matter, we did not receive any of those calls, so I wanted to put that on the record. We talked a little bit about this case, and again, I didn't hear many people cite the case itself, so I'm just assuming it is the one called United Kidawa Band of Cherokee Indians in Oklahoma versus FCC. And again, I want to comment on a portion of that case because I think there's been some confusion about the impact to our city, the impact to our state, the impact to decisions that we can make at this time. And in this decision, when the court looked at the various petitions and the various orders, there was five points. And when the court made their decision, they found that when FCC looked at the National Historic Preservation Act, or NHPA, and NEPA, which is again, the or NHPA, and NEPA, which is again, the National Environmental Policy Act, they found that when FCC did their analysis for that particular case, for this particular area, they had problems with that decision. So they granted the petitioner's request on those two things as far as alleged violations of NEPA and NHPA. But it's important to note that while they have some incredible wording here that, that we might use in cases that we might have as far as California League of Cities against the FCC that's currently underway, it doesn't impact us as far as how we can apply this case. This matter had to do with small cells. And we're not dealing with small cells here. It had to do with NEPA and NHPA. And as I indicated earlier, that does not apply in this case. So since that case does not apply, as far as my opinion, how I read it, let's look at 47 U.S.C., Section 332, Subdivision C, 7B4, which says, "No state or local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning such emissions." And again, as Dr. Kramer has said a few times, it is important that we understand that that is what the basis of this appeal is about. And again, our city, for the public, just, it's, it's important that you do know this. We look at every case that we get. We take our time to analyze it. We hire, the city hires Dr. Kramer in his office. Yes, we have hired him for a number of years. Why? Because he's an expert in this area. And the reason why we do that is because there are times in which we attempt to fight back through the legal realm that we can. And, and we do that with effort if we can and with an analysis of the success. And one of the things that has not been on the table since 1996 is if the RF emissions meet the federal guidelines, that is off the table across the nation, across every city, across every state. It's off the table to deny the case because of that issue. It is very important that you understand that. We heard comments about Calabasas and some other cities. Again, I request that you look at those ordinances carefully because most of them, that I've read at least, have an out. And that out is that if it doesn't, if, if there's a request for an application for a location, that under the general rules of the ordinance, it's not permitted. They have to permit it if required by federal law. And while we don't have that in our city, I'm going to, I suspect that there's going to be some case down, down the road where they're going to say, yeah, it's required by federal law. So I mentioned NEPA. There's also a comment about aesthetics. Again, we're looking at this case very specifically. And Mr. Chua and staff, Dr. Kramer, we look at this case and we say, does it meet the boxes of our wireless policy? Again, this is a macro site. So we're looking at our 97-197 policy. And again, we check the boxes. It is going into a commercial area. It is stealth. It is located and it's put into a, to a tower, to hide it, to make it stealth if possible. Again, these are efforts that we make. A lot of cities do not do that. But we make those efforts and F, again, to help us and to help our residents to make this less objectionable if possible. Finally, Dr. Kramer mentioned that there is a new petition with the FCC from the wireless industry. And that has to do with removing the ability for local agencies, cities such as ours, to even ask to review the RF emissions, whether they meet the minimum standards. What would happen if this is, if the wireless facilities or wireless industry's position is taken by the FCC? And granted, it would mean that we would be unable to ask for review of the RF emissions to ensure that they're meeting the standards that are required by the federal government. That's exactly one of the things that Dr. Kramer does. He looks at these cases. And there's going to be situations at times, not always, but at times, because it doesn't help Verizon, it doesn't help other agencies or other operators to not comply with that. But sometimes, guess what? There's a, there is an issue. And by checking it, we work with them and say, yes, let's make sure that this complies with the federal regulations. And that's taken away from us. So what are we doing? We are actually petitioning, spending money, spending effort to fight that. And we do that because we're concerned on the battles that we can fight. We're concerned about, let's do what we can to make sure that we protect our police powers as much as we can, our local authority as much as we can. Again, win or lose, I'm not going to tell you right now. But again, we're making efforts where we can. Going back to RF emissions, though, we can't, that's not a fight for us because it's been clear since 1996 that's been out. I read the statute to you, 47 U.S.C., 332. Again, it's, that issue is at our hands. And I'm just going to, again, reiterate that at the end of the day, for this case, all these appeal points, it has to do, the bottom line, with the RF emission output, right? And so that's why the recommendation is what it is. And that's why we are recommending approval because of those aspects of our policy that it meets.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. Commissioner Bus, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Mr. Chua, one of the public speakers brought up the fact that the view from his backyard may be impacted by this. I know that we've got a number of pictures looking across the ridgeline from the freeway and from the shopping center. But I'm curious, have you taken any pictures facing north? And so that we can see how their views are impacted, the residential neighborhood behind there?
No, we didn't. Reason being is, reason being is because there's no city regulation or policy that protects private view.
I understand that. I'm just curious. We spend a lot of time concerning ourselves about how, how buildings appear against the ridgeline. We looked at it facing south. I'm just curious if we looked at it facing north?
No, we didn't.
Okay. Thank you very much. I've got a few more.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
For Dr. Kramer, I've got a few questions. Are you aware of any local municipality nationwide that has, has contested the building of a wireless facility for an ADA compliance reason?
No.
Are you aware of any, due to any health concerns?
I'm sorry, just to be clear again, you said a city that's opposing it because of?
Any municipality, any?
Here's what happens, and this actually happens throughout Southern California. One of the things that the public may not be aware of is that in most cities, the number of wireless projects that are tendered for approval is less than the number of wireless projects that are tendered by the applicants. One of the reasons, and this has happened a number of times in Southern California, is that they have, wireless companies have come in in various cities and proposed sites that do violate ADA clearance primarily. And those just get bounced. So again, the projects that reach this level are the ones that have gone through scrutiny. But you don't see the projects that don't reach you. So yes, projects have been denied on ADA, but that's been because they never qualified to go to an actual decision.
Okay. That makes sense. And then you mentioned your rebuttal. The FCC has been instructed to review their regulations by an appellate court?
I think it's very clear that the D.C. Circuit wants the commission to review the standards, yes.
What's your impression of the timeline for that?
There is no timeline. And in fact, the FCC recently, last year plus, completed a multi-year process of reviewing its rules that were first adopted in 1997. And the commission basically came up with a position that there was no basis to change it. Whether this will cause the commission to go back and reevaluate it, I don't know. But it will be glacial at best.
Glacial at best. Okay, I'll take that. And then you also rebutted the incidence of Sprint voluntarily removing a plant up in Modesto Sacramento area. My question is, are they still dealing with, with the cancer incidents at that elementary school as a result of that factory that you mentioned?
I don't know.
You don't know? Okay. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions, just to clarify some, some points that public, came up in public comments. Mr. Kokar, and again, I apologize if I butchered your name there. One of the issues you raised was that you felt that in this case, we had not done sufficient alternative site analysis. In fact, isn't it the case that in a previous application, the commission rejected the application? I'm referring to one in the Sunset Hills area in large part because the commission felt the alternative site analysis was insufficient?
If I could remember it correctly, during that meeting, Verizon was asked how many potential replacement sites would be needed if Whitechapel, it's called Whitechapel back then?
Yes.
Was not approved. The answer from the Verizon technical person was varying from seven to nine. So there is no specific answer. The commission didn't get a specific answer. And the, the denial was based on the fact that Verizon cannot make a, a straight-out answer to what is needed as far as alternative site is concerned. How many is needed?
My, my recollection of that evening was that both staff and the commission, the consensus on both, both parts was that there was not sufficient alternative, alternative site analysis in that case to make, to make a good decision to proceed. Is that, is that something, a statement you'd agree with?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Because Verizon failed to prove that, basically, the, the denial was based on the fact that Verizon failed to prove that the site is the best alternative.
So this, this is one of the reasons I asked Dr. Kramer at the outset whether alternative site analysis was in or out of scope in terms of making a decision. Some cases, we agree with the, an applicant or with staff that, that sufficient site analysis has been accomplished. In other cases, we do not agree. But we, we make decisions about that either way.
Yes.
Another comment suggested that Dr. Kramer is somehow a stooge in the pocket of telecom providers. And I wanted to ask for some more detail about a previous comment. I don't even think it was relative to a particular case. But in a previous telecom wireless hearing, Dr. Kramer appeared before this body and arranged a little demonstration in which he constructed a scale, not scale, a life-size model of, of a box using PVC piping. It was larger than a full-size refrigerator and had an associate of his stand inside of that box. And I wonder if you could remind us of the intent of that demonstration and what, what happened subsequently and where we are legally with the objection that you raised that night by the size of that box and where it would be located?
That was a memorable evening. And when I make presentations before this body, one of the things that's vitally important is that I not technobabble. It's really easy to do that as an engineer. It's easy to do that as a lawyer. So I tend to use illustrations like the box that you talked about. Or one of the, the public members talked about the fact I used a 12-inch ruler to explain the RF rules of the FCC. I try to use tools like that. And they're very effective in trying to illustrate technical concepts. Now, as for your specific question about the 28 cubic foot box, that's what the FCC ultimately adopted. That's what we are currently challenging in federal court at the Ninth Circuit. And we're one of the 10 cases, which includes the city through the League of California Cities. So I am cautiously hopeful, no lawyer likes to handicap, but I'm cautiously hopeful that we'll see some good law come out of that next year.
And, and it's the case, isn't it the case that, that, that case has to do with provider location of facilities on public rights of way?
Well, it, it attacks the basic premise that the FCC wants to take away more local authority as for sites, primarily, but not exclusively in the right-of-way. And the way that they've done it, and the shock lock, and the limitation on fees to try and basically choke local governments out of the ability to even review projects is a serious issue that we hope the Ninth Circuit will see through and rule in our favor, rule in all the local government's favors.
And again, a question either for you or for Mr. Heer. The, the city, the city's position through its membership in the League of California Cities is for or against what the telecom providers are proposing?
I think it's fairly safe for me to say, and I don't think anyone doubts it here, that we are intensely opposed to the overreach of the commission, which many people have called a captured federal agency. Captured or not, the right place to solve that problem is not to avoid the rules, but it's to challenge them in the right forum, which is, in this case, federal court.
All right. And then the final thing is just to reiterate. Some of the comments, both by the appellant and during public comments, had to do, centered around objections or comments made, even by FCC commissioners, about small sites or about 5G service. Again, just to be clear, the application, it's been appealed. And the appeal before us this evening has to do not with 5G, but with 4G service. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good. Thanks very much. Nothing further.
Okay. I do not believe we have any other questions. So at this time, okay.
Mr. Heer, I just wanted to ask you, as far as the city rules go, obviously, we have a lot of, a lot of restrictions and a lot of intent in how, how we do design. And we're talking about a gentleman who's going to be looking at a 10-by-10 box from his backyard. And I, I know that we, he saw, Mr. Chua said, we don't specifically have a rule against that. But it seems like the intent of the city is, is to maintain a certain level of, of our rural aspect. And I was just curious, what your take on that is? And what our responsibility is to preserve that?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chua was correct. We don't actually have a view shed ordinance. So we do not protect someone's view. And what we do is, I think the reason why there is a focus on the front is because we do have a highway corridor requirement that we always have to be careful of whenever we have a proposed project off the freeway. We're always looking at the 101 corridor or the 23 corridor, make sure that it's compliant with that and some of our other major streets that we have. So we, we look at that. And so that was part of the analysis of that. So we, we don't actually have one for someone's protected view for whether it's a tree, whether it's a house, something of the nature. The other issue is, we do have a, or again, as part of our planning policy, is we're always looking at the ridgeline. And we try to, I think it's, over time, we've been, been better at that. Initially, it might not have been as focused of a point. But we do try to protect the ridgeline views as much as we can. So when people are seeing it, we don't see things that are silhouetted above the, the ridgeline to, again, catch the eye in a, in a aesthetic view type of thing.
Okay. At this point, Mr. Dr. Marshall will have a five-minute chance to speak if, if he chooses. And then after that, the Verizon representatives will have five minutes also.
Well firstly, firstly, because it's fresh in my mind, is the advice from Patrick Heer on 332C7B4. There are two sections to 337, 337-2, 337C7A and B. And the B is the one that contains the paragraph that has been consistently read as precluding the city from acting on health and radiation concerns, even though FCC has never actually codified that themselves. But actually, if you look at 332C7A, what you'll find is there are two sections to 332C7. There is A and B. A refers to individual siting decisions. A refers to individual sighting decisions. B refers to blanket decisions, like a moratorium, for example. So even on the restrictive reading that that 337C2B4 gives, it's, even with that restrictive reading, it still only applies to a blanket restriction throughout the city and not to specific sites within the city. And I'd really like to work with the attorney on more fully understanding what can be done under the ADA to make this equipment ADA-compliant, because if the communications equipment which is being installed into the city can't be made ADA-compliant, it can't be installed into the city. That is law, and that is clear. So there must be a way out, and we need to sit down and discuss the ways out in more detail and in a different, less formal forum than we have here, because I'm straining to remember the points before that one, the last one, to remember what came up. I know that there was the, there were a number of issues raised by, oh, yeah, yeah, the actual DC Circuit Court of Appeals specifically vacated the order. The FCC order in the Federal Register, which is behind all of the regulations they issued, and is required for those regulations to be commandments, that specific order was vacated, 1830, if I remember quite correctly, 18-30, is the order, and the shot clock disappears, the 60-day shot clock disappears, because that had been justified on the basis of the NEPA override that FCC had used. So that's why Commissioner Rosenwessel said this is a major problem. There was a significant amount of FCC overreach which the DC Circuit dealt with on August the 9th, and then they dealt with a whole lot more, and in more specific terms, by talking about overreach, in the decision on October 1, the Mozilla decision. And incidentally, the Mozilla decision effectively took away all regulation of internet from the overrides which the FCC claims on the city. It's a very important thing. It splits apart for the first time internet and voice, because when the 1996 Act was, came into being, there weren't iPhones, it wasn't any data, it was just voice. And the 1996 Telecom Act was to make sure that there were voice communications within the city. And that 1st of October decision split those apart, and was specifically dealing with the internet access when it was discussing the, or actually commanding the override, striking down the override. So those are the main points, I think, but we really need to discuss this in greater detail in more, you know, by Twitter or email or something, where we can actually deal with issues more easily than in a formal environment we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. I'll be brief and just touch on the aesthetics issue that was raised. So it is true that the city doesn't have any private view protection, that's not really allowed under California law. This also isn't a ridgeline issue, but the city and Verizon didn't just rely on those legal principles. What they did is they come, they came up with a very compatible design here. We've got a very minimal extension of the existing cupola or tower that's there. It's architecturally integrated with respect to design, color, you know, the tile roof, things like that. The antennas are fully concealed. When you take a look at the totality of the very minimal design that we have here, this is really the gold standard with respect to design of wireless facilities. Architectural integration, minimal, you know, as possible, and full concealment. All of this complies fully with the city's code, which is intended to minimize view impacts. So we'd like you to take that into consideration about the detail that went into the design on this facility. Thank you.
Can you return to the podium for a moment, please?
Since I got you up here, I'm going to ask you a question. I know there's a number of cell phone tower, you have a number of towers already in existence within the city limits. I know there's one in my neighborhood. I was just curious, how many of them are within 150 feet of a home? Are they all pretty much that close?
Yeah, so I don't know. Here, I believe, we're maybe 150 feet or so, I think more than that to the property line. Actually, to the residents, we're closer to 190, based on our measurements, but we don't have any detail about what the average distance from a residence is.
You don't have any stats about any of your other towers in town?
No, we don't have that information.
Is anybody up there? You guys don't keep stats, right?
No, we don't.
All right, I appreciate you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so are there any more questions of staff? At this point, I will close the public hearing, and I will open up the floor for a motion and/or discussion. Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the speakers, Ms. Alman, I believe, said final loophole. So I spent the weekend reading every single piece of paper, Professor, that you submitted. I read every case, I read every statute I could find, I read every possible thing, looking for a loophole. In the 1994 earthquake, my wife was three months pregnant, and we lived near a power station, and we're 118 meets 405. And because of the release of zillions of gigawatts of power, my daughter suffered immense problems when she was born and lost three pounds within two weeks of being born, and will probably always have various issues related to that. So you can imagine last year, when we had a wireless facility application come before the commission that I was recused from, because it was within a few hundred feet of my house, I was concerned as well. I want you to know that me, and I'm assuming all the commissioners, we're not challenging you in terms of whether there's an issue, we're not doubting you, we're part of you, we live in your community, okay? We are all in this together. We're not doubting you in that process. The issue is not whether we believe there's any medical impacts by electromagnetic sensitivity, that's not really the issue before us today. The issue is whether we can do anything about it. So I looked for a loophole. I spent way too much time, and my wife was not happy, because I was supposed to be looking for appliances, by the way, and I did not find any. Unfortunately, this issue is so involved, you guys want us to sit there and go through a ADA versus FCC application. We're not a court, we can't evaluate legal, you know, legal concepts like that, we're not a court of law. We also don't pass laws, a lot of you referred to us as council people. I appreciate that, but we're not. We're not a legislative body, we're an executive body that's charged with very one specific task, taking applications and applying the rules that exist to those applications. I cannot go beyond the bounds of that and apply my own personal feelings, whether I like it or not, to whatever the process is. In looking at this, we have city rules, 97-197, which is very clear, it hasn't been revised, hasn't been amended, and by the way, the appeal isn't even directed to those rules. The application is done under those rules, and was ultimately found by the hearing officer to be acceptable, whether I like it or not, whether I think there's a radiation problem or not. Personally, I think actually it's a good accommodation, it actually looks pretty good in terms of the situation, in terms of how it would look. But all this other stuff that we're asked to do in terms of finding the ADA applicable and on conflict with FCCs, and whether they're involved, all of that is actually, I would enjoy that conversation. I got into this process to help people, I would love to help you with that, but we can't, because it is beyond our control. The only thing we can do is look at the rules that we're governed by, which is the city rule, and ultimately whether there's an FCC override to it, which probably, right now, everything I've read has not been overdone. There may be cases that talk about various issues, and I appreciate, Professor, that you cited cases that sometimes are a little bit off of what you're talking about. So for instance, one of the cases actually talked about whether states can pass net neutrality that wasn't specifically dealing with RF, or they maybe talk about other things. So there's no case yet that I've seen that's directly on point that gives us any loophole to actually identify and deal with that as a planning commission, in my opinion. So with that, I would move that we adopt the attached, or resolution attachment for denying the appeal and upholding the administrative approval of DPMN 2019-70219, with the additional condition number 16.
Thank you. Are there any comments, Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to endorse Commissioner Lanson's eloquent and accurate summation of the case before us. There are certainly larger issues here. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I want to endorse, be another commissioner endorsing Ms. Alman's comments, that we're not on different sides here, we're all part of the same community. But the issue we face is not an issue for the planning commission. And I'll give a couple of analogues to drive that point home. The United States has been at war in Afghanistan for the past 18 years, and that directly affects the health and safety and even the lives of service members and their families right here in Thousand Oaks. In the 1970s and 80s, another issue, federal and state governments undertook a series of measures to deregulate our energy industries, and as a result, investor-owned, shareholder-owned energy companies have failed to do a certain amount of maintenance that has resulted in wildfires that, again, have had health and safety effects that directly affect the lives and safety of residents here in Thousand Oaks. Now, in both those cases, no one, no one with a straight face would say, well, that's something for the Thousand Oaks city government or the planning commission to address. This is not the appropriate forum for these matters. Whether we like it or not, whether we like Verizon, whether we like the FCC or not, our current laws, which we took an oath to uphold, state that there is only one regulatory body in the United States that has the authority to make determinations about RF safety and health, and that's the FCC. And I'm very comfortable with that arrangement, for the same reason I'm comfortable with us having one system of air traffic control in the country, one system of railroad rules in the country. Our national health and safety is better off if we don't have many walled-off silos, each with different rules and different ideas about what is or isn't safe. Now, we can agree or disagree about whether the FCC rules as currently constituted are safe, but those are currently the rules that we need to deal with. I will disagree with Dr. Kramer on one point. He testified that this isn't a medical issue, it's an issue of law. I think it's both, but the appropriate forum for that is not here, it's the United States Congress. Dr. Kramer has testified to that on many occasions. I'll disagree also on one minor point with Commissioner Lanson, where he said, "These cases are beyond our control." They're not. All of us have the power, if we don't like the current medical status or legal status, to change that, just not in this forum. The appropriate forum for that is at the federal level. If you don't like the current system at the federal level, change it. Our job here in Thousand Oaks is to uphold and implement the rules that currently exist. We don't have the power to change what you're asking us to change, but the Congress does. And I encourage you, and I'll work with you, to help change those laws in a way that's more responsive to the changes you're asking for. But in terms of what we can do, we can look at aesthetics, we can look at site analysis, alternative site analysis, we can look at community standards, and let's go through those. On aesthetics, I'll agree, I look at every case and say, "How would I feel if this was next door to me?" And yeah, I probably wouldn't be too happy if someone, anyone, wanted to put up a 45-foot tower next door to me, I wouldn't be too happy about that. But it's legal, I wouldn't be able to challenge it on any legal grounds. In this case, I agree with Commissioner Lanson that this is architecturally a very compatible use or covering of the application. I might not be happy with it, but I think under the circumstances, one, it's legal, and two, aesthetically, it is blending in with its current surroundings. So I don't really have a basis on either grounds to object to that. On alternative site analysis, I too have some experience in this area, I'm a recovering network engineer, I've done plenty of site analyses, and while I didn't conduct this one myself personally, I've used enough spectrum analyzers, as Mr. Manzis has. I know what sources of radiation are, I know what heat maps look like, and I don't have any expectation that if I did the same analysis, that I would come up with a substantially different result. So while in the past, we have rejected applications because of insufficient alternative site analysis, in this case, I feel that the alternative site analysis is correct. So on all those bases, alternative site analysis, compatibility with surroundings, and in terms of what we are legally able to do, I'm going to support Commissioner Lanson's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bus?
I also share my fellow commissioners' disappointment and misgivings about what our purview is and what our scope is as far as how we can address these issues. But as they have already told you, there's not a lot we can do about that. We're not the legislative body that gives ourselves the power to do these things, and so unfortunately, we cannot address a lot of the things that you guys are bringing up, and basically, the bulk of what the appeal is based upon. I have the greatest sympathy for what you're going through, Doctor, but there's not a lot I can do. And I think about it in terms of the fact, I worked in the automotive industry for 20 years, and I used to look at a Prop 68 warning every day and stand next to a lathe where I cut asbestos clutches. And so I'm aware of the long-term health effects and the fact that, as a general rule of thumb, a lot of the things that we make decisions about do impact people's healths. I brought it up earlier, whenever we talk about a commercial building, we discuss the number of parking spaces. All of you probably drove here in a car today, and that all contributes to air pollution that all of us breathe, and does shorten our lifespans. And the reality is, is that we cannot protect everybody from everything that's going to happen in the process of the projects that we approve. We can't save everybody, we cannot make the world perfectly safe for you. And a lot of those limitations are based upon what the legislatures in the state and at the federal level determine. And so that's why we're stuck where we are. But do not misinterpret that as us not being supportive and not being understanding of what your position is. Thank you.
Thank you. I have three very eloquent and articulate commissioners that I'm working here with, so I'm just going to leave you with their words, and I do agree with them all, and I appreciate their comments. At this time, will you prepare us for a vote, please? Hold on, one more thing.
Just a quick clarification, since this is an appeal, if Mr. Heer, if you could just brief us, if you could just let us know what a yes or no vote means.
So the motion was accurate by Mr. Lanson. It is to adopt the resolution, the resolution would deny the appeal and approve the project.
So a yes vote would deny the appeal?
Correct.
Thank you.
That was a good point, thank you. Motion carries 4-0. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. Thank you all for your time and your words, we do appreciate your input, absolutely. All right. Next, we have department reports. Next, we have department reports, and it appears we have none. Item nine, Commission comments and AB 1234 reports. Do we have any of those? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question. The governor signed some new laws recently, one of which involved ADUs. Will there be any attempt to modify the city codes to coincide with that?
Great question, and the answer is yes. There are, I think, they're walking away, but I think there's 17 or 15 new ADU bills.
18 bills total, five related to ADU specifically.
Right. So we are in the process of, one, there has been some inconsistency with the rules, some of the statutes as amended or as approved to be amended. And so we are going through that process. I think the impact's going to be the beginning of the year. But the specific answer, I apologize, is yes, we are planning to amend our code to frankly, address those issues.
One concern, again, in reading it, I was having a hard time understanding if there was a different variation as to the cost process. I didn't see if there was a difference or change in that.
Yeah. It's interesting, because, and I'll be brief on this, part of it depends on the size of the ADU. For example, now, they, according to one of the new statutes, they can go up to 850 feet is a minimum that we can require now. Ours is currently, I think, 600 or 650. And the way that the charges work is that if it's less, if it's 750 or less, I think we can't charge certain fees that we normally would charge. If it's 800 or more, then we can charge those fees. So that's something, again, to be looked at. Another issue is owner occupancy has now been taken off the table. And another issue that was brought up in the past was, I, and I'd have to check again, so I'm going to just, I'm giving you estimate right now, but I believe they have the rule that's changed saying that you can't have a contract, or any contract that prohibits ADUs in any place is null and void like to do with solar. And I think that's to get a capture of the HOAs.
I agree. One other quick comment, just a shout-out to the fire department. I wasn't here last time, but the efforts with regard to the Wendy Fire that was near my house were absolutely unbelievably amazing. And I cannot thank the Ventura County Fire Department enough in terms of helping me and making sure our neighborhood was safe. Thank you.
Are there any more Commissioner comments? Okay. Thank you. Staff update, item 10A, follow-up items, announcements, and upcoming issues?
None on item A. In regards to item B, we do plan to have a planning commission meeting on December 2.
Okay. At this time, thank you all. The meeting is now adjourned to the next meeting, December 2, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, everyone.